Our agenda for this evening, we need to add an F2 Capital Projects bid. We need a motion to do that?
Some.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I can't hear you.
Okay. Dr. Hicks.
Thank you. I'm going to go through a very brief rundown on the 2016-17 budget. All of the information regarding the different iterations of the budget exists on our webpage, along with video of all of the meetings that we've had to discuss the budget. Bottom line, when the New York State budget was adopted a couple of weeks ago, we received additional state aid above and beyond what we had originally planned for. We originally planned for about $600,000 of state aid, and at that point in time, there was no wiggle room to make any recommendations other than status quo budget from one year to the next. When it actually came in, we got a little bit over $2 million in aid, so we made some recommendations to the Board of Education on what could be considered for the 1.25 million in additional school aid. First, reducing the appropriated fund balance. Again, the appropriated fund balance is our surplus dollars from the end of one school year that get appropriated as revenue in the next school year. At times over the years, we've had a very high number for an appropriated fund balance. In the last two or three years, it's been $1.8 million. We had originally, in the first and second iteration of the budget, recommended that it go to $2 million per year. Right now, we're saying, take the lion's share. Our recommendation is to take the lion's share of the 1.25 million in additional aid, $800,000 of it, reduce that fund balance back down, the allocated fund balance back down to 1.2 million. That, in essence, will increase the unrestricted fund balance at the end of the year, and we can use that money in the future to hedge against potential volatility in state aid. We're not confident that state aid will remain at the levels that it has for the past two years. Last year, we received about $1 million in state aid. This year, we received about $2 million in state aid. Years prior to that, it was as low as $75,000 and as high as 500,000 or 600,000. So, it's volatile. If the economy doesn't turn around, districts like Clarence may receive less state aid, and in the day and age of a tax cap, having a hedge is a critical thing for us so that we don't have to cut program and people. So, $800,000 to hedge, $100,000 applied to the tax levy to lower it. Our tax cap number is 3.11. The original proposed levy was 2.99. With adding this $100,000 to lower the levy, the levy would go to 2.76. We're also advocating to add some positions which we believe are absolutely necessary for the betterment of program. Four teacher aides, three teacher aides for our special education department that are mandated through student IEPs. We'd have to figure out a way to do those three teacher aide positions one way or another, regardless of what the Board does with the budget. One aide for the high school learning center, the LAC at the high school. What does LAC stand for?
Learning Assistance Center.
Learning, sorry. Learning Assistance Center. Thank you. One of the most highly trafficked places in the high school. One maintenance position that will help us with, to get back to our traditional project crew for painting and general maintenance in buildings, and to avoid some overtime costs. And then, two teaching positions. A K-5 teacher, and we'll make the decision about what building that teacher goes to early in the summer, when we get all of our enrollment counts complete. And a social studies teacher at the high school, which will increase elective choices, lower some class sizes, and allow for academic intervention services in that particular subject area. So, those are the recommendations. Some assumptions from this particular budget, as it's been recommended. A tax levy of 2.76 is well below the cap. There's no reductions in program or people. We're asking to add what we had talked about. We're going to use a combination of state aid and miscellaneous revenues to balance our budget. The total spending increase year-over-year is 3.6 percent. That's up from the original budget, which was 3.1 percent. We would like to decrease the appropriated fund balance. Doing so, and adding the $100,000 to the levy, the estimated tax rate is $14.62 per thousand. That takes into account about a 1 percent growth in assessed value in the town of Clarence. It's likely to be less than that. It has traditionally been less than that when we, when the Board sets the actual tax rate in August. We still believe that homeowners are going to get a rebate on their school taxes if they qualify. Less than $300,000 in income, paid school taxes for the past two years, maximum $125 back. So, for us, that would be about a $600,000 house. We're also recommending a proposition to purchase nine buses for our fleet. This is the revenue side of the budget, and you can see 2015-16 compared to 2016-17, and how everything plays out. Our total budget, 78.1 million. Our ratio is about 70 to 75 percent local, 20 to 25 percent state, in how our budget is funded. These are the three big elements of the budget broken down. We will post on our website a line item budget that provides a little bit more detail in each one of these, but for the purposes of presenting the budget to the public, these are the three big categories that you have to use. You can see administrative expenses are up about $100,000. Capital expenses up, close to $700,000. That's mostly on our debt service. Instructional expenses up, a little under $2 million. This is a summary page that we've used in every single one of our budget presentations about the past five years. It shows last year's budget total, how much revenue we will raise with a tax levy of 2.76 percent. That other revenue is mostly state aid. It also includes sales tax, Medicaid, some interest money that we get, and a decrease in the allocated fund balance. That brings us to a total budget of 78.1 million. This is the official property tax report card. We must provide this on a postcard to every resident of the district. I think it's three weeks prior to the vote?
Actually, it'll get mailed out one week before the vote.
Thank you, Rick. This shows all of the numbers that calculate, this shows many of the numbers that calculate the tax cap. This is the bottom line, in terms of what does it cost individual taxpayers on a home, and it's easy this year. It's $25 for every $100,000 of assessed value. So, $100,000 house is a $25 increase annually, $50 increase for a $200,000 house, $75 increase for a $300,000 house. We do believe that those numbers, if your house is not reassessed, could be lower once we receive all of the assessed value information from the town of Clarence. Could be appreciably lower. We also think that people will get rebated this year if they meet those particular conditions. Three years ago, at the request of the Board, we started with five-year projections, and these are our expense projections, and just so that, these are estimates, of course. They're volatile, and they're subject to change. The closer you are in the one, two, three, four, or five years, the more accurate they are. Once we get out to five years, they're guesses, and they're not completely accurate, but they're pretty close. So, these five-year expenses take into account the following assumptions. 3 percent annual anticipated raises for the employee groups. This particular budget takes into account about four to five retirements per year. It's highly likely that we would have more than that, which would improve the bottom line. The benefits are dependent upon wage increases. The retirement systems, which is a very costly benefit, are stabilizing and reducing. We anticipate maybe one or two more years of reduction if the stock market stays strong. Our medical insurance number is a, we put in for about a 5 percent per year increase, which is lower than the industry average, and all other areas about 1 percent on these particular expenses. On the revenue side, we put in some additional sales tax every year, about a 1 percent increase. It's been higher than that in the past 10 years. Our local revenues, we project to remain flat. Basically, local revenues are money that we make on interest, arbitrage that we make on borrowings, which we're limited on, and payments in lieu of taxes, mostly for commercial properties who have cut a deal with an industrial development agency, whether it's Clarence or Erie County. At our fund balance, we are projecting in here the fund balance to stay at 1.2 million for the five years. That may not happen. If we have decreases in state aid below what we're showing, then that allocated fund balance is likely to go up. The tax levy, we have during the duration of this period at 2.99 percent. Again, there's three big factors in determining the tax levy, especially the cap number. The first is the growth of the town. For us, that's hovered between 1 and 2 percent over the years. The second is the debt service that you have and additions to your debt. Next year, we'll have some more additions to our debt as a result of our building project, but then our debt will start to level off. And the third big chunk is the cost of living increase for the state of New York. Right now, for the first couple months of the year, it has been zero. It's projected to be at least 1 percent next year. This year, it was .012 percent, or 0.12 percent, sorry. And we're putting in about a 3 percent increase in New York State aid annually. Again, that may not happen, and if it doesn't, we will have to backfill with some of our reserve money. A 3 percent increase annually would be about 700,000, $6 to $700,000 for us, based on these budget figures. That's a reasonable expectation. Some basic information for everybody, because tonight is the night that the Board will adopt. The next big budget item is May 9th. It's a public hearing. It's required one week before the budget vote. It really won't have any new information at all. Rick will kind of walk it through, but it's required by law. On Tuesday, May 10th, we will have our Meet the Candidates Night. There are two Board of Education seats open this year. If we get enough candidates, we'll have a Meet the Candidates Night. It is sponsored by our PTO. The PTO is going to, we're going to set up a web page for the PTO where individual community members can submit questions in advance, and then the PTO organizers will collate those particular questions. We will put on that webpage the questions from last year, so that everyone can see what was going on. So, Meet the Candidates on May 10th, and then Tuesday, May 17th, is our statewide budget vote. We start at 7:00 a.m. and go till 9:00 p.m. in the gymnasium. We will have preferred parking for senior citizens and handicap. We will make sure that our kids and our staff get their cars out of the way and go to the church next door that we have a deal with. Yes, we will be having on that day the elementary track meet, which is a traditional thing. So, the times, right around 5:00 to about 6:30, very heavily trafficked, and we will, we'll have a shuttle bus at the library, Rick?
Yes.
Shuttle bus at the town library. Two propositions. The first proposition is the budget. The second proposition is the budget, and then voting for two members of the Board of Education. So, that's the quick rundown for the Board of Ed. Any questions that I can answer, Mrs. Claus?
We talked extensively last week, but does anyone have any other questions on the Board? For clarifications or follow-up or comments, questions? No? Okay. Then we will move to the public comment session, and just as a review of some of our public comment procedures, we ask that you walk to the microphone, give your name and address prior to asking your question. This meeting is being taped, and we want to make sure that anybody that is viewing the tape can hear your question, as well as the other people that are here in the room. Again, when, after you ask a question, we ask that you yield to the next person if there's someone waiting, so that everybody gets an opportunity to ask, and then you can return to the microphone to ask another question after everybody has had a one-time chance. As further information, as Board members, we're happy to answer any questions, provided they are posed in a manner which is deemed polite and respectful. And we will stay here as late as necessary to do so, to make sure that everyone's questions are answered and concerns have been addressed. In the interest of respect and exchange of information, please do not applaud statements or boo when someone is speaking. We may elect to ask you to submit your questions prior to the meeting to eliminate exchanges that are not polite or respectful. I will remind you of the Roberts Rules of Order. Please do not get up to the microphone to interrupt a person asking a question or one of the Board members answering a question. This Board spends hundreds of hours of our own time volunteering to be on the school Board. We are all taxpayers in the town of Clarence, and find working together to find solutions to issues is much more productive than name-calling, yelling, or screaming at one another. So, please feel free to step to the microphone and ask away.
Dr. Hicks, at the, about this time last year, we asked what you budgeted for a new teacher, and you said $100,000, and you have 80 budgeted this year. I was wondering.
Right. That was based originally on callbacks from the Preferred Eligible List, which were required to maintain for seven years. Within this particular scenario, we think $80,000 is going to be really close to the mark of the actual cost.
$80,000 also includes benefits.
$80,000 includes benefits.
I'm not familiar with the callback list. Could you explain that?
So, I can describe really quickly. When a teacher is laid off in a particular subject area, a particular tenure area, when they're laid off by the school district, they're put on what's called a Preferred Eligible List. That list remains active for seven years. You must call people back in the order of seniority from the Preferred Eligible List before you would hire somebody from the outside.
Gotcha. So, that's based on an average of where they would land in the pay scale?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
When will we see a decrease in the tax levy now that the GEA is eliminated?
Remember, our state aid makes up about 25 percent of our budget. So, the GEA this year yielded us, the elimination of the GEA yielded about 1.8 million in state aid. In order for us to apply that to the levy, we would have to make that particular recommendation. We did apply $100,000 of the additional state aid to reduce the levy. We're hedging on $800,000 and about $350,000 worth of position restorations.
Okay. Well, here's my thoughts on it. You know, for the last six, seven years, however long the GEA has been enforced, you know, every year, it was, well, we have to increase taxes because we're losing state aid. And in between that time, over 100 positions were laid off. So, you know, where, where does the, where's the money going? And, you know, I think you kind of almost made a deal with the voting public to approve this, these budgets, and we're looking at almost a 20 percent increase in the tax levy over that time, and now there's, there's absolutely no give-back or relief now that the GEA is eliminated.
Well, the one way I would respond is that we have been at or below, and in the last three years, we've been below, the tax levy cap as calculated by New York State.
Well, that's, we're not talking about decreasing the amount it's going to increase. We're talking about decreasing the entire tax levy.
Right. It's going to be very difficult for us to have a tax levy that doesn't raise enough revenue for us to run the school district, when 70 to 75 percent of the school district revenue comes from local taxpayers. When that number is capped, and we're below that cap, that has been, for us, the prudent level.
Well, where, where has the money gone for those 100 positions that were laid off? Now that you're, you cut those positions because the GEA, and you lost state aid, so you had to make it up in a combination of layoffs and cuts and raising taxes. So, now that your, your state aid is restored, you know, and the tax levy is up 20 percent, my question is, where is that money?
Right. Well, just because the state aid came in this year higher than what we anticipated doesn't mean that all the state aid that was technically owed to the school district has been restored. The formula-based aid has essentially been frozen since 2007. That is many millions of dollars.
But you are running a surplus every year, and you're supposed to have a zero-balance budget, right?
I would say that an entity of our size with a budget of $75 million could not run at a zero at the end of the school year, that that would not be a responsible way to budget. We end us with, we end with a surplus of between $1.5 and $2 million. That's an appropriate level for a budget of this size. Then, we appropriate a pretty good chunk of that as next year's revenue. That, in effect, lowers the tax levy.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay.
I have one more.
When will it be time to reevaluate the outsourcing of transportation? Because, you know, we were told that there was a study done, and come to find out, that study is 20 years old. I don't know how you can rely on information that old.
Well, we did an informal, I don't know if we want to call it a study, but we, go ahead, Rick.
Right. We did, we did talk to, actually, the company that did that study, and I think you're right. It's probably 18 years old by now. The, the study did say we're running an efficient operation, and that outsourcing was not going to be advantageous to us. We are seeing that neighboring districts that have outsourced are coming into problems because of that outsourcing. You're too dependent upon a couple of contractors only that are in the area that will, will bid on your program. The way we run a program is very efficient. We do have our own bus fleet, obviously, as we're asking for a proposition for buses. Misconceptions, if you outsource, you have a huge surplus for some reason. You know, if we sell a bus, New York State, who aids us 70 percent, gets 70 percent of anything we sell the bus for. So, really, a formal study, from my recommendation, isn't needed right now. We're running a very efficient operation at this time.
But just to answer your question, Ms. Lombardo, if the Board requested a formal study, then we would do that.
Okay. And this 3.9 million allocated for transportation, does that include the bus proposition as well?
No, it does not.
Okay.
The bus proposition is $825,000. It would be a separate vote.
And that's bonded over five years.
Okay. And just, just a thought on the study, you know, I hate seeing studies done, because, you know, it's just cost more money. You know, if you, if you look at First Student, or whatever company you want to go to, their business, you know, I'm sure you could go to them and say, what, what, what would it cost for you to provide us with transportation? And I don't think we need to get involved in having studies done, because it's really not necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that something, Rick, that would be hard to do, to get a rough ballpark quote? I mean...
It would be, it would be a little difficult. It is quite an undertaking for a company to come in and give us a quote if we weren't serious about contracting. So, so that's why the, the studies sometimes are done, and then a formal RFP gets put out.
What are, what are some of the metrics they would use? Is it like dollars per mile, or dollars per student?
I think, I think they'll actually look at everything. They will, they will tear apart our routing package and see how many miles we go and where we go with those miles. They will look at, you know, we're double-tripped. They will look at all of that kind of stuff. The, again, some of the neighboring districts are having a lot of concerns, because some of the contractors are not doing what they hope they would do with better gas prices and lowering or stabilizing their yearly cost.
I believe I read an article last budget time, March, April of last year, in the Buffalo News, if you wish to look it up. I think it was Maryville, where they spoke to the challenges they have now that they've eliminated their entire fleet, and all of that capital investment has been basically sold off. They're at the whim of the provider, and the, after they got beyond their first year of contract, it rate increases, they came back and really got sucked pretty good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Finance, Mr. Magus.
Sure. The first item that we have, I won't get into too much detail, as Dr. Hicks just went over the entire budget, but it's to approve the budget and property tax report card. Our budget, as mentioned, is 78,113,100 proposed for next year. The levy that goes along with that is 45,286,097, and that is $152,000 below the calculated tax cap. So, it requires a simple majority vote at the May 17th election. All the information from Dr. Hicks' slide is then on the next page for the property tax report card, and similar information is mailed out the day after the budget hearing is required by New York State on a postcard to everyone. The information, while that gets mailed out the day after the public hearing, so it's only a week before the vote, we will have the newsletter, which has not only all of that information, but much, much more, will be out much earlier than that.
Do we also need to approve the bus at this time?
No. The, the bus proposition, when you approve the notice, is, is there. So, there's no additional approval.
Okay. All right. I'm going to call for a roll call vote on the approval of the budget and the property task report card.
I like the proposal we're putting forth. I like the fact that we're reducing, reducing the appropriated fund balance. I think that hedges us in the future in case things are a little different. I like the fact that there's the five-year projections, and I, so I'm, I vote in favor.
Yes? So, that's a yes? Okay. Mr. Stock.
I'm, I'm voting in favor as well, for all the same reasons.
Mr. Lotte.
Yes, I, so, you know, when I decided to run for the school Board, it was so that we could try to stop reduction in staff and things like that, to preserve what we have for the students in elementary school, like my daughter, and I, I think this budget, you know, does that. I think it's, I think it's responsible, and, and I like the reduction in the appropriated fund balance, because I think it does help us to preserve what we have for the, you know, the next set of children that will be coming through the school. So, I am in favor of the budget. I vote yes.
Okay. Mr. Pughes?
I vote yes as well, for reasons I really went into last meeting, but just to reiterate, I think, again, echo some of the comments made. It's a balanced budget, balanced approach. It's conservative in that we don't know what's going to happen from the state aid side of things, as well as the state growth factor and how that's going to play into the tax levy calculation in the near future. So, I think we are protecting programs, we're adding a little bit back.
Thank you.
I mean, I have some concerns about adding positions, whether that's sustainable or not, but I think they're, you know, some of them are necessary, we have to do, and I think the budget that we're proposing is a bit of a compromise, and, you know, we're giving some back to the taxpayers in some respects, and so I'm okay with it. I'll vote for it.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Andrews?
I'm voting yes as well. I think it's a fair and responsible budget. It gives a little bit to all the parties involved.
And I will be voting yes as well. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Then it passes. The F2?
Should we open the last bids for our capital project? We had already awarded the roofing contractors for some work this past summer, and we awarded the site contractor so they can get staged and started early enough for the turf. The last bids we have are for the general work, the HVAC work, the plumbing work, and the electrical work. Three of the awards that we'll recommend tonight are the low bidders. The plumbing award is the second lowest bidder, as Gorilic and Sons sent a letter that says that they have made errors to substantial material, equipment, and labor in their calculation, and would make it impossible for them to complete the project with the quality of workmanship at which their customers have been accustomed, and they are withdrawing their bid. It was evident, we knew we had to take a close look at that, as their bid was over $300,000 lower than the second lowest and the grouping of bids. So, I'd like to recommend, and you have the letter from the architects recommending everything, each company was vetted. I'd like to recommend Concept Construction for the general bid. That's a company we did use... That's a company we did use here several times for our building projects. They did a great job. Mollenberg Betts for HVAC, Numaco for plumbing, and Fry Electric, another company we use quite a bit here, winning bidder on other projects for the electric. The other, one quick thing I would want to mention is, right now, everything looks very good as far as the budget goes. The contract awards from the roofing, the site work, and the four that we're recommending tonight is approximately $700,000 below the budget that we have for that.
I have a question on that, Rick. Am I reading this right, that the bid for the site work is 5.96?
Yes.
Was our initial budget for that 5 million?
The, the site work isn't just the turf. There's a lot of site work being done, parking lots and sidewalks and things like that for all the buildings. Also included in the site work is septic system work at the bus garage. So, the actual budget we had for that chunk, including the turf, was 6.1 million.
Okay.
That's a great question, and we were below on the turf.
Yes.
We were below the turf, on the turf bid.
Yes, we were. And the turf part alone, if you extrapolate that from it, the budget for that, the proposition was 5 million, it was somewhere between 4.7, 4.8 million.
Okay. What, what did they decide to use for the, instead of crumb rubber material?
A virgin EPDM, so it's, it's not any of the recycled rubber. It is factory-new rubber in essence.
Any other questions? So, a motion to approve the F2?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So, then we can move to adjourn our regular meeting. Need a motion to?
So moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to adjourning?
No?
Okay. Good night, everyone.